Good evening, welcome to the February meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. Please help me open the meeting by honoring our country and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for coming tonight. I know we have a full house and I understand that in the Ben Craig Auditorium upstairs, we are live streaming this to those who cannot fit in our room, which normally holds everybody that wants to hear from us with ease. We appreciate the participation of everybody that's here tonight, both the listener and the speakers that have signed up on the speaker list. I'm going to exercise the prerogative of the chair and move a couple of things up in anticipation of an open forum that might take a little bit of time. We have awards and recognitions with several students, if we could take those first, so the students will have the opportunity to leave, they still have the opportunity to stay. Barbara, Dr. Larson?
Thank you. In December, the college's Center for Sustainability was honored by the Mid-America Regional Council. JCCC's composting program won a Sustainable Success Story Award, one of six local projects recognized at a ceremony held at the Kaufman Conference Center. The annual Sustainable Success Stories event is part of an ongoing community dialogue focused on building a better understanding of sustainable practices that have the potential to transform our community. Congratulations to Dr. Jay Antle, Michael Ray, Crystal Anton, and student interns Emily Reno and Sydney Simpson. Our composting program also receives great support and collaboration from dining services, grounds, and the Open Pedal Campus Farm. Congratulations.
You have the opportunity to say something about the program if you want, or introduce yourselves. Please come up to the podium.
Well, we didn't know we were going to have anything, so. But we do want to thank everybody's support in enabling us to have a composting program on campus. It's something wonderful, it's something unique that we get to do, and not many other campuses have that ability. So we do thank everyone for letting us do this, and it's created a good amount of savings for us as well. So, thanks.
And I have more.
In addition, Johnson County Community College was recently named one of Johnson County government's first certified green partners. The college was one of just seven businesses and organizations leading the way in waste diversion and sustainability in Johnson County. Dr. Antle and the Center for Sustainability were recognized at a ceremony hosted by the Johnson County Board of County Commissioners on February 4th. So again, thank you so much for everything you do.
And another piece of hardware. I understand there's a rumor going around that 40% of the compost material comes out of the board. That's not true. Okay. I was also going to move the Student Senate report by Student Senate President John Rives up before the open forum. I don't think President Rives has been able to be here today, so we will not move that up. If he shows up later, we'll go ahead and do that. Before we move into the open forum session of our meeting, I'm going to ask for a motion to recess into executive session for a period of no longer than 15 minutes for the board to receive advice and information from our General Counsel, Tanya Wilson, on House Bill 2531, which I suspect will be the subject of many of the public comments. We anticipate the speakers will address that legislation, and our General Counsel is prepared to brief us on the legalities of that bill. Given the number of people here, we're going to change our normal practice, and especially since this is at the start of a meeting, we're going to, the board is going to move and exit to the Lidl conference room, so you all can stay here. So, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege in the board's communication with its attorney on legal matters. The session will last no more than 15 minutes. No action will be taken during the session. We would like to invite Presidents Sobchak, Dr. Korbe, Andy Anderson, Dr. Larson, and Tanya Wilson to join the session. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. It's, yeah, we should have done this right at a 10-minute mark. We'll be back here at 5:23, 15 minutes at the longest. So, let's move over to the conference room. Thank you all for your patience. Thank you. We've returned from the executive session and returned to open session. No votes are finding action. We're taking during the executive session. President Sobchak advised the board of his proposal and plan to promptly begin a process to meet with representatives of faculty, including Faculty Association, to evaluate and explore potential options if House Bill 2531 does make its way through the legislature. I think everybody's general goal is to find a process that will, I used the word mimic at Faculty Senate last week, and I'm not sure it's as solemn a word as it needs, but that will parallel the due process protections that have been in place, so that our faculty feel comfortable that they're being treated appropriately, and so that we can attract and retain faculty as we have in the past. And my understanding is that's been discussed with Ron Polczek and with Nathan and other faculty members. I know it was a subject of the Collegial Steering Meeting two weeks ago, and it was a subject of the 75 minutes I was able to spend with the Faculty Senate last Thursday. With that background, for the open forum session, I'm going to provide the statement that we normally make at each meeting. The open forum session of the agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are generally limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door prior to the open forum agenda item, and when addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to be respectful and civil, and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters. As a practice, when matters involve personnel issues or other matters that are addressed through the college's established procedures, grievance or otherwise, we don't respond to those because they're the subject of another process. In today's circumstance, given the interest in this meeting and the number of people that are here, which is by far the largest number of people since I've been on the board in five years, and we have six speakers who have signed up, is there anybody out there that wanted to speak but wasn't able to register? Okay? There are none in this room. If there's anybody upstairs in the Ben Craig Auditorium that wished to speak but didn't arrive in time to register by 5 o'clock, please come down and we will endeavor to let you register and have your comments. I know the members of the board have received comments from various folks on HB 2531. We appreciate that you've taken the time to come to this meeting, and I had some notes here, because I've been through a lot of public hearings as a member of the City Council, and I've been through them as lawyers representing parties in front of governing bodies, and I had this in there because I know often it's read, but I don't think we're going to have a problem here with speakers being respectful and civil. This is a higher education campus, and I expect that we'll all be civil and thoughtful and insightful, and we can still be passionate, and that's exactly how the Faculty Senate was last week, and I really appreciated the opportunity to see that in place, and it makes me even prouder of our faculty. So, we're ready to go. I've asked the board members to, if they have comments, we will ask them to make their comments after everybody has spoken, as opposed to breaking up the conversation with each individual speaker. I'm going to read the names in order. If you want to wait till the end or something, just let me know, but these are, this is how I received them. First speaker would be, and I know that our video department has tried to get name tags so these can be put up, so that the public, when they review this film, they will be able to see who is speaking. The first one I have is student Chris Russell. Chris, you want to come to the, and I recognize you from Faculty Senate. You would like us all to register and then to vote. If you'd give your name and address, please, sir.
My name is, if you would pass that. My name is Chris Rozell, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. President, members of the faculty, the administration, students, guests. My name is Chris Rozell. My address is 4823 Mohawk Drive, Roland Park, Kansas. The issue that I'm bringing before you is, well, I'm bringing two issues. One is, as a student, I want academic freedom for my faculty. I want them to be able to speak the truth, share the truth as they understand it with all of us, without fearing for any consequences. Second, what I originally had thought to come before you is, I'd like to urge the board to measure student engagement, civic engagement at Johnson County Community College. The reasons for that are our student learning objectives. At least five of them, probably six of them, support civic engagement. One of them is access and evaluate information, collaborate respectfully, communicate effectively, demonstrating the understanding of the broad diversity of the human experience and our connection to it, select and apply appropriate problem-solving techniques. What student would learn all of these things and come out of Johnson County Community College and say, "I don't need to be involved in our government"? I don't think any. Yet, today in Kansas, according to the latest census surveys, only 36% of 18- to 24-year-olds are registered to vote. In the last election, only 14% voted. Now, people my age, 2/3 of us voted. But can we move ahead with our youth not engaged in our government, with them not contributing their knowledge, their learning, their motivation, their inspiration to it? I submit, no. Furthermore, the Kansas Department of Education did a survey of 20 school districts throughout Kansas. It did focus groups in those 20 school districts, 265 focus groups, I'm told, and the number one item that they were told that everyone wanted was civic engagement of our youth. Lastly, with what's happening in Kansas in the last half dozen years, is, for some reason, our voter registration among our youth is plummeting. So we fall into 45th in the nation. For some reason, our voter participation among our youth is plummeting. We fall into 39th in the nation. There are places, Mississippi gets twice, almost twice the voter registration we get. Maine gets over twice the voter participation among our 18- to 24-year-olds. To do anything about this requires knowledge, and so I submit to you that, given what our student learning outcomes are, given what our situation is, that I request that the board take a step and measure what student civic engagement is among our student body. The Student Senate, the student organizations will take care of the rest, but we need a baseline. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris. And I understand you are a Student Senator as well, on campus?
I am a Student Senator as well.
Okay. Thank you for appearing here and at the Faculty Senate. I think there are things we can do that would help, I mean, those numbers are a little bit appalling. I mean, half the rate of Mississippi and 49th in the country.
Thank you, Chairman Musil.
The next speaker is David Davis.
I'm a faculty member with the English Department here at Johnson County Community College. I've had, for the most time, the privilege of being a professor here for 25 years. During that time, I've served as Chair of the English Department, and I've been Vice President of the Faculty Senate. I say that not to quote my resume, but to establish that I have worked with the administration of this college for more than two decades. And I can honestly say in that time that I have never viewed the administration as an enemy. Different worldview, of course. We have different jobs, and we don't always agree. I have to put that in the past tense, though, because I have something to tell the board that I don't think they want to hear, and that is, things are bad. A couple of years ago, one of my colleagues came to this podium and told you that there was a morale issue at the college, and she was told, "Oh, no, there's not. It's just, it's just a few isolated faculty." It's not a few isolated faculty. And this current issue has brought it up, but it didn't start here. The resolution to get rid of due process for faculty members in community colleges across the state was met with agreement from presidents of all the colleges but one, and I'm sad to say it wasn't ours. The President and the Board of Trustees of Kansas City Kansas Community College put together a very eloquently worded statement about why due process is so important. It's sad that it wasn't our college. However, I always try to find something optimistic. We, the faculty, have heard today from some of our colleagues who are in Topeka, who have been told by our representatives that if Johnson County Community College would stand up with Kansas City Kansas Community College and oppose this bill, that there is a very real chance it will not be passed. We do not have to talk about this bill as if it is a fait accompli. We do not have to mimic the law. The law is still there, and we have the power to do something about it. I would love to once again be an employee at this college that doesn't see the administration as an enemy, but sees it as a group that we work together with for the best interest of those students. I'm going to end with an observation that I hope is obvious, but I'm not sure it always is. To have a college requires two groups of people. You have to have students. That's a very good focus that we've always had. You also have to have faculty. Those two are essential. You can do without everyone else, even the fine people sitting at this table, but you have to have students and faculty. And unfortunately, there has at least been the perception, and I hope it's not the reality, that the current administration is anti-faculty. And since faculty are essential for a college, that would make them anti-the college. I desperately hope that's not true. I desperately hope that the people here want to fight for the kind of academic freedom, for the kind of education that has made Johnson County Community College a jewel. We used to laugh, we being the faculty, when one of our previous presidents used to say that. I wish it was still happening. And so I sincerely hope that this group will fight to make sure that the education in Kansas stays as, as good as it possibly can. Thank you.
I left something out of my initial comments. Booing, cheering, applauding, you know, doesn't further this process. This is not really an athletic event. We take it as seriously as we think you do, and I would just urge everybody to understand that we're taking notes, we're thinking about your comments, and if we, if we kind of cheer after every, after every speaker because of what they said, or boo them because of what they said, then I think we are, we're demeaning the process a little more than we should. So, I appreciate the fact that people are passionate here. I suppose people in Ben Craig Auditorium can cheer as loudly as they want. We normally don't accept cheering or booing as to anything that goes on in this room. So, when we move on to the next one, is Sean Daly, who is, I guess, a faculty member as well.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sean Daly. I'm an Associate Professor of Anthropology here at JCCC, and I also run the College Center for American Indian Studies. By training, I am an applied anthropologist, a sociocultural anthropologist, who has spent his adult life working with American Indian peoples and communities. As such, I have learned quite a bit from the native peoples and communities with whom I have worked. One of the lessons I have learned is that of the seventh generation. There are many American Indian nations in the US and Canada who believe that when an important decision needs to be made, one must think about how that decision will affect those seven generations in the future. In other words, what will the pros and cons be for your descendants? I ask that all of you think about the effects of supporting House Bill 2531 will have on the college, its students, faculty, staff, as well as Johnson County as a whole in seven generations. I have thought about it at great length, and I truly believe this bill will negatively affect the college, Kansas higher education, and the state as a whole. And while I am concerned with what is occurring in Topeka and at the other community and technical colleges throughout the state, I am more concerned about what's going on here at JCCC. Over the past few weeks, I have seen a quick and dramatic decline in the faith and trust that the faculty have here in the college's administration. In the 10 years I have been at JCCC, I have never seen morale as low as it is right now, nor have I seen so little trust and faith in the college's administration and its decision to support 2531. Earlier today, there were several colleagues of mine saying that they did not know if it was worth coming tonight to this meeting, because the decision had already been made, and the college was not going to support the faculty nor change its mind. Even though the bill passed committee this afternoon with a favorable vote, KCK Community College and its board came out against 2531. I ask that all of you, President Sobchak, all the trustees, and anyone else in the administration who has, say, in this matter, come out against HB 2531. When I was a child, my mother and father taught me that sometimes you're going to lose the fight, but what's important is that you fight the fight and do what is right. I believe that is true. I am here to say that I intend to fight HB 2531, win or lose. It would be nice to know that my college and its administration supports me in my fight, as well as all the other professors here at JCCC and throughout the state who are against this bill. I am sad to say, though, that right now it feels as though we are on our own. We have no support, nor are we being heard. Right now, I am jealous of the faculty at Kansas City Kansas Community College. Dr. Sobchak, a couple of years ago, I came to you, and me, you, Doctors Korbe and Anderson, and Jim Lane had a good discussion about my role here at the college, after I was approached by a university outside the state who wanted me to come there. In one face-to-face meeting, and a few emails, and a single handshake, we came to an agreement, and I decided to stay here. And while my colleagues, the students, the faculty, the facilities here, and so forth, all played into decision I made, the relationships, faith, and trust I had in all of you, my superiors, greatly played into my decision, as did the support you showed me. Please do not make me regret my decision, nor destroy the trust I have and faith in you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Jim Leicher. Jim?
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jim Leicher. I'm Chair of the History and Political Science Department. I want to thank the board for giving me this opportunity to speak, and I thank Chairman Musil for his explanation at last week's Senate meeting concerning his position on House Bill 2531. There are many who disagree with yours and Dr. Sobchak's position about local control. I'm not one of those. In fact, I'm here to argue exactly the opposite. Local control is precisely the issue, but I think your definition of it should extend to the faculty member in the classroom. All the frustrations that you have had with the state government, with decisions resting in the hands of people far away, with no appreciation for local context, are the same frustrations felt by instructors at this and other community colleges around the country. Understanding that frustration is crucial for understanding our anxiety about the loss of statutory due process. The word faculty only describes a contractual relationship with the institution. Our primary relationships are and always have been with our fields of expertise. We are educators, yes, but more importantly, we are accountants, mathematicians, scientists, writers, psychologists, counselors, interior designers, artists, and art historians. Most of us were called to those fields before entering the classroom. In fact, it's our experience in those fields from which we gain the credentials and the confidence to enter the classroom or the D2L shell in the first place. To govern the music program the way you would govern dental hygiene makes about as much sense as governing JCCC the way you would govern Garden City Community College. Two very different places, different cultures, serving different needs for different audiences. One reason why tenure was established a century ago, and has been a foundation of American education since, was to support academic libertarianism, to ensure that decisions affecting instruction of these disciplines would be made by those who understood those disciplines best. My own field of history is not that different from others, in that my task is to provide students new and unsettling information. Since most people don't like having old ideas and ways of doing things questioned, good education sometimes means making them mad. I've been criticized by peace activists for spending too much time on military topics, and I've had veterans walk out because I played anti-war protest music. I've had African-American students ask where I get off as a white guy teaching black history, and I've had white students say I rammed too much black history down their throats. I've been called a communist and a bourgeois defender of capitalism in the same class. 25 years of teaching has taught me not to lose sleep over this, though I do look for patterns, and if the pattern shows I'm upsetting everybody equally, then I'm probably doing it right. But I have lost sleep these last two weeks, wondering what will happen when due process is gone, and I could be fired by a future trustee or president who doesn't comprehend the difference between a good teacher and a popular one. Given recent trends, that day seems to be fast approaching. In the name of efficiency and cost-cutting, too many colleges have embraced centralizing tendencies that minimize faculty's unique knowledge and experience by reducing their role to that of a learning facilitator. Good education is not easily quantified. You can't measure it with KPIs or on an Excel spreadsheet, nor can it be articulated objectively on a set of learning competencies or a strategic master plan. It happens at the level of dialogue between instructor and student, and only happens when the instructor is free to experiment, to try what is risky instead of what is safe. HB 2531 comes at a time when faculty here and elsewhere are worried about a business model approach that de-professionalizes us, makes us vulnerable to shifting political winds, and encourages less innovation, not more. Less innovation, not more. I'm sure this is not the intent of everyone supporting this bill, but I do know it is the intent of some supporting this bill. So if local control is to be the new order of the day, I ask you to use it in two ways. First, restore a reasonable expectation of due process to compensate for what the state is taking away. And secondly, recognize that local control is but an empty platitude if it does not protect the autonomy of the professor in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. I know I said save comments to the end, but if good education is making people mad, I'm doing a great job. Our next speaker is Rhonda Barlow. Rhonda? Rhonda?
Hello. My name is Rhonda Barlow, and I'm a professor of mathematics. I have been a full-time professor here at the college for fourteen years. Morale is indeed at an all-time low, and I speak to you in fear and retribution for my words. Faculty were told by President Sobchak last week at a Faculty Association meeting that he did indeed support House Bill 2531. At that time, we were led to believe the bill had originated from the House Committee itself. You can imagine our surprise when we went to Topeka to testify to the Education Committee and were told that this bill had been presented by the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, of which our president is a member. After testimony was presented and during the question-and-answer session of the opponents and the proponents, and it was communicated to everyone in the room that the bill had in fact originated from the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. The president from Garden City Community College, who was a proponent, speaking at that time, stated that all nineteen community college presidents had voted unanimously to support the bill. Now, Representative Nguyen was in the room at the time, and she is an adjunct professor at Kansas City Community College, and she said, "No, this is indeed not the case. My college president is in the room at this moment," and she did not vote for this bill." You can just imagine the feel that we had in the room. The air was literally sucked out of the room when it was made known that this was indeed the case. We have had word, as others have said, not two hours ago from Topeka. I have a very, very elegant letter that the Kansas Community College president and the Board of Trustees wrote opposing House Bill 2531.
We will include that as part of the minutes.
And I would indeed ask you to stand with us now, and we have heard that if you did, that this bill very well may be defeated on the floor of the House. During the FA meeting, President Sobchak assured us that nothing is going to change. Don't worry, and it is that claim I would like to address. The Fourteenth Amendment states, "No state shall deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of the law." To determine whether a professor has a property interest in a tenured or tenure-track position, we must look at state law. Forty years ago, the US Supreme Court held that the Fourteenth Amendment's due process clause guarantees that a tenured professor may not be terminated without first being given notice and an opportunity for a hearing. So there is precedence from the US Supreme Court to look to the state statutes for what due process is in place. In fact, there is a case now in the Kansas court system that will probably go to the Kansas Supreme Court for the K through twelve teachers who have also lost their due process. President Sobchak is incorrect when he says this means nothing. In fact, I believe it means everything. This attack could not come at a worse time. With guns being put in our classrooms, Brownback taking money out of capers, and now this, the faculty feel less valued than ever before. I will leave you, the board, with this question. Since your membership to the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees is funded with money from the foundation, how could you use this money to hire lobbyists to work against faculty and not tell us? Thank you.
Thank you. Vin, Vin Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Trustees. The, I trust that I will not be repeating myself or repeating that, but other people have said too much. And the word I've heard, of course, is that this bill, which is wending its way through the legislature, is a done deal, and I think that's probably correct. And so I'd like to make the argument for the board to do what Mr. Musil implied, which was to provide the same kinds of protection for JCCC faculties that the current statute does. Just real briefly, due process is really important because it promotes the free discussion of ideas in college classrooms. This is essential for learning. It also safeguards innovation, which is often risky, and it makes the college attractive to the best faculty members, which facilitates recruitment, helps retrain faculty members, and raises morale, which leads to better teaching. The current statute protects due process by providing adjudication by an impartial hearing officer with the possibility of appealing that decision to a district court. This process has equal rights for both the administration and a faculty member being terminated. The current board policy does provide some due process. It provides for hearings, but the hearing is before the Board of Trustees, which may not be totally impartial. This board, of course, is an exception to that. But, you know, we always think about what might happen in the future. So I would urge that the board put the requirement that there be an impartial adjudicator into the master agreement, and I would urge that it begin the process now. And I think it should be done now for a number of reasons. First of all, I think this bill's going to pass. I haven't heard anybody say that they think that it will fail. It passed the House Education Committee eleven to six, and it seems to be on its way to becoming law. Putting, I think, putting the protection of the master agreement now as quickly and as expeditiously as possible is really important. Even if the bill didn't pass, which is unlikely, it's a useful thing to have in the master agreement. If the bill, for some reason, doesn't pass, it's still useful because it provides protection. A second reason for doing it right now as soon as possible is that it will restore confidence among the faculty, and you've heard a variety of opinions and feelings about people who are feeling very insecure and unhappy. And then, the, there are two more reasons, I think, for putting the bill into, for working on getting this into the contract right away. Waiting for three months, possibly, into the summer before it is put into the master agreement or put into board policy will mean that most faculty members are no longer on campus, and during that three months, you're going to have a lot of uncertainty and unhappiness. And finally, I think it should be done when faculty members are on campus to participate in the process, and I think if the board proceeds in this fashion, which I think there is some desire to do, I think that it will go a great distance toward solving some of the problems that we face right now.
Thank you. Chief, is there anybody? I understood there was somebody from upstairs that wants to address the board.
Brett. Good evening.
Give us your name, and I bet I didn't ask for, I asked for address, but just name and who you are, so everybody knows.
Hello. My name is Brett Cooper. I'm assistant professor of mathematics here at the college. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm currently, if you know our hierarchy here, assistant professor means that I'm in my first three years. I'm currently in my third year here at the college, which means that I am currently finishing my probationary period. So I do not have due process rights. Without your action, all the faculty here at the college will be in perpetual probation. That's not a healthy state of mind to be in. So I thought I just might, you know, give you a sense of what might that be like if you have an entire faculty essentially on probation without your actions. JCCC claims to prize innovation. One thing about innovative ideas is that they often fail. Failure is not something someone on probation feels comfortable with. So I thought I would give you a list of ideas that I have that are somewhat innovative and feel safe attempting and discussing out in the open while I don't have protections. In an institution of higher education, the free exchange of ideas, debate, and argument are essential. In a system without due process, there is no free exchange of ideas. Faculty will constantly be checking themselves to make sure they don't say the wrong thing at the wrong time in front of the wrong people. The debates and arguments that we have and value in the hallways, offices, and classrooms, and even here in the boardroom, will sound like this with no due process. Without due process, when the administration seeks faculty input, they receive only, and they receive only silence in response. How do they interpret that? Is it, "Well, faculty must agree with us. They didn't say anything." Or could it be, "We don't really care"? Maybe it's, "We'd rather not tell you our honest opinion because we value our jobs." Attracting and keeping top-notch faculty is essential to a thriving academic community. You cannot attract and retain top-notch faculty and talent without due process. Although we, as the JCC community, have little power over what transpires in Topeka, we do control what happens here. If the Kansas Legislature succeeds in stripping us of our due process rights in the name of local control, then I urge you, take that local control and use it to put due process in the master agreement. A good faith effort to give us back the rights the legislature is trying to strip away will go a long way in healing the wounds that have opened in our community over House Board 2531. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brett. That's all the speakers that we had lined up this evening. I thought, I'm going to start with, kind of sharing with others what I shared, I think, with Faculty Senate last week. I've learned a lot about what we call due process or tenure or continuous contracts over the last two weeks, some of which I thought I knew and some of which is brand-new. And it was, it was helpful to have that meeting with Faculty Senate last week and to hear questions and comments and feel the passion in the room for a change that is being proffered from Topeka. I am absolutely sure that the ability of this college to continue to thrive and have high-quality teaching and learning is dependent largely upon the extent to which we are granted local control over many, many aspects of running a community college. I served on the Overland Park City Council for eight years, and I've now been on this board for five. I've watched the ups and downs of the legislative process in Topeka. It's been alluded to here that there have been, this isn't the first attack on public education or public educators in the last few years. It layers on top of other attacks that have largely occurred at the K-12 level or the border regions level. But having watched that process, I am much more confident in the voters of Johnson County and the trustees on this board, working with the faculty in this college, to come up with a solution that satisfies Johnson County Community College's needs much more than I am sixty-three House of Representative members and twenty-one senators in Topeka and one governor, which is what it takes to sign legislation. House Bill 2531 may be designed and intended to send a message. It may be intended to strip statutory due process rules and regulations, but it does not strip due process. It is what we heard earlier today and what I know that Ron is dedicated to as president of the Faculty Senate, or Faculty Association, as our bargaining unit, Nathan as president of the Faculty Senate, the president of the college, Dr. Corb, who's been working at this college for a long time on human resource issues, is dedicated to doing is to find a solution that works for Johnson County Community College and that will be embedded in our tradition. This legislation was passed in 1974, so it certainly, there is a long history of academic freedom protections that stretches back maybe centuries. That's my timer. I'm not, I'm going to keep going. That was for Vin. Stretches back for centuries, but this protection's been there since 1974. This college has followed that, and the process that will go forward will find a way to follow that for Johnson County Community College. What troubles me the most through this process is an inability, at some point, to look at the broader picture and to step back and say, "Can we do better ourselves? Must we rely on Topeka to tell us our solutions?" I know there's a lot of passion behind this, and it's harder to look back when, when you think your job is threatened. My job up here is not threatened by this, I don't believe. But the consistent philosophy that this college and this board has, has followed in my five years on the board and has instructed our administration and has talked to the public about and has told citizens we're for is local control, that we believe that the voters of Johnson County electing this board will elect people who will do the best interests of this college, and the best interest of this college is to have the greatest faculty we can have. And that doesn't mean willy-nilly firing. It doesn't mean because we don't like the color of your shirt, that the president is going to fire you. So the protections that are already in our policies are designed to give some of that protection, and what has been proffered is a new process to evaluate that and find out how to strengthen those policies. And we heard it from Rhonda, I think. This board has made its position pretty clear on guns on campus. We don't want guns on campus. We don't want our faculty members to have to worry about whether someone in their class, who is challenged in Jim Leicher's history class, to get upset about it and be armed. We don't want you, as faculty members, to have to think about whether I should be armed to protect myself in that class. We don't want to worry about it in this meeting. Topeka has told us on July 1, 2017, guns will be allowed on our campus, concealed and open, will be allowed in our buildings, in our classrooms, in Yardley Hall, in our labs, driving around campus. That's what Topeka told us we had to do against the wishes of this local board. The legislature this year is likely to pass a cap on the ability of this board and this college to fund its college by local property taxes, because Topeka thinks we don't know what we're doing and they know better than we do. This board has consistently said local control is better in terms of funding this college and determining how the money is spent. This legislature may consider enacting a statewide bill levy to fund community colleges, which will make it a statewide funding source where Johnson County dollars will leave Johnson County to go to Topeka and never come back. We think that is wrong, and we would rather have local community colleges fund themselves by their taxpayers as they were intended to do, to do when the authority was passed by the legislature forty years ago. There's an effort in, in, in the legislature to eliminate service areas so that Johnson County could compete in Barton County, and Barton County could come to Johnson County and open a storefront right across the street in the College Village Shopping Center and offer classes to Johnson County students. We think the local control ought to allow us to focus on Johnson County students and spend those monies wisely here locally. The point that is sometimes missed is that when we tell Topeka, "We don't want you to meddle in our affairs on A, B, C, and D, but we want you to meddle in our affairs on E," that has an impact on legislators in Topeka. It is important to me, I think it's important to this board, I think it's important to this college, that we consistently follow a fundamental philosophy and principle that says, "We will do it better with our heads together here on this campus than they will do in the legislature in Topeka." The last four or five years in the legislature have convinced me of that more than ever. I hope, as you step back, that will convince you of that as well. And so I'm asking the entire Johnson County Community College community to take a deep breath, to see the broader view, to believe that this administration and the faculty members that are here and that have been involved in the leadership for many years can sit down together and put their heads together and come up with an idea and a plan that they'll bring back to this board for us to consider so that faculty members will feel comfortable, as they have in the past, that they need to give their best quality teaching, and we will honor that at this board. I don't think there's any evidence that that, that anything other than that has happened in the five years I've been here. I don't see anything from this administration that indicates it doesn't honor faculty and good teaching. good teaching and student learning and student engagement. And the support of this bill is consistent with our fundamental principle of local control and doesn't change how much we honor faculty. I told the Faculty Senate, my mom was a teacher for 15 years before she had children. She got up at 6:00 in the morning to start the coal-fired stove so it would be warm for the students when they got there at 8:00. I have great respect for what you do as teachers. I think everybody up here does. We are gonna find a way to do the right thing if Topeka passes this bill, but I'm very uncomfortable with going to Topeka and saying, "We changed our mind, we think you're smarter and better at deciding the policy for Johnson County Community College than we are." And that's hopefully what I told the Faculty Senate last week. I don't expect everybody to agree with it, I wanna make it clear what my individual position is. I'm happy to open the floor to other board members. There are other comments. Trustee Cross.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I appreciate your candor about the concerns that I know the community college faces and the community colleges face across the state with respect to funding threats, with respect to things absolutely being levied upon us. I would further concur that this board and administration has had nothing but the highest regard for faculty and for how it conducts itself with respect to the community of scholars. My concern, with all due respect, Mr. Chair, is that there is passion, great passion, on both sides of this issue, or all sides that I've observed. I'm a lifelong Kansan, we value education tremendously. I also concur in the statement of thinking of the seventh generation. There's concern in this board, in this community, in this administration, that if one does step back and look at possible threats to who could or could not control this board, policies are easily overturned. I invite this board to take a stance on this one way or another. Place the current allowances of state law into the master agreement, so that there's some level of putting one's money where their mouth is at, so that there's at least a contractual precedent at the next collective bargaining agreement, so that there's not any kind of messy dispute. That's one of my concerns, is that by adopting this position, we're forcing unnecessarily, forcing one of our labor pools into a very difficult position next collective bargaining session. I think, I agree with you, Mr. Chair, and this administration, on about 90 to 95 percent of issues and items. I've seen you, I've been in meetings at darn near every hour of the day, and I see how hard and appreciate how hard you work. I just honestly disagree on this issue. I do not see it as a local control issue. I think there's an element of checks and balances. Carrying out your logic to its logical conclusion, does that mean we get to decide our own curriculum? If we do it better than Topeka? Government is about checks and balances, and this check is needed to balance out the ability of the next board to make its own policies or to jam a faculty into an embarrassing situation which causes everybody grief if somebody has to go out on strike. I mean, that's, that's a terrible situation to be in, and I do think that there's just many, many issues to be considered. Certainly guns on campus, I certainly concur with you there. I think that the funding issue is one of immense entertainment. A state that doesn't believe in Reagan or Bill Graves' era tax policies would rather implement a real estate tax? That befuddles me. I, I think that it's difficult for people, in my estimation, often as a lawyer trying to collect fees, for people to come up with large chunks of money at a time. I think one reason that the income tax system was implemented was it's a fair way to collect tax revenues efficiently. Not to say that I'm not a big fan of it or don't question my politics when I have to pay my taxes. Here, I, I just don't think this is about local control. I concur fully with President Givens and the board at Kansas City Kansas Community College. We have many, many levels of local control evidenced by this board sitting here tonight. I do believe this is a strategic maneuver for collective bargaining positions, and I think frankly, the long-term benefit of academic freedom requires, and I beseech this board to oppose House Bill 2531. I am a realist, a pragmatist, I think Professor Clark is correct, this will pass out perhaps without whatever we do. I do think that we could have some impact if we did oppose it. At a minimum, I beseech this board to adopt it into the master agreement, so there's some sort of contractual precedent, so that the faculty is not jammed and they have to ask for it in the next collective bargaining session, and that we can make sure that this is a long-term part of our culture here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I don't, again, everybody, as the students were, are welcome to stay for as long as you want for the rest of our meeting if, but I suspect, I'm sorry.
One other thing, Mr. Chair. Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to confirm, we are going to have another executive session, is that correct?
We'll schedule one at the end of the meeting. I think, can we do that? Where's Tanya? Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think we left, both of them are on the agenda, right?
No.
Okay, well, we can have one at the end of the session.
Thank you, just a brief one.
All right, if anybody wants to leave, we're gonna give you a couple minutes to, to sneak out before we go on to the next agenda item, which is...
May I sneak out?
You don't have anything nice to say anyway.
Trustee Musul and members of the...
I know you're anxious to tell us all the other good things coming out of Topeka, but just a minute here.
You still want me to wait?
The worst thing is a member of the audience feels like you're being hurried out of the Okay, Mr. Carter, fresh from Topeka.
Fresh from Topeka. Well, that's why I had to stop and pick up some Smart Water on the way out of town, because I've been there a little bit too long, and we've had some long days. If we, we didn't make much progress during the first four weeks of the session, but we've certainly made up for that during the past two weeks. There's a lot of activity that has occurred. The House and Senate have passed a budget agreement that probably doesn't get us where we need to be. The, the court has issued a fairly significant opinion that's not contained in that budget agreement to, to sort of true us up, if you will, and I'll talk about that here in just a minute. We've had a little kerfluffle in the Senate as far as leadership is concerned, and that sort of, that sort of lays the groundwork for, for the, the temperature in Topeka, if you will. The, the Senate just yesterday agreed to a conference committee report on the budget that, that brings a balanced budget, if you will, not counting for whatever may be required for K-12 schools as ordered by the court to, for '16 and '17. That leaves an ending balance in, in 2016, fiscal year 2016, of about $6 million and probably closer to $90 million for 2017. I'm not confident that those numbers will hold, but, but that's, that's the, the numbers that are on the paper that was adopted over the past couple of days. Little debate, little comment occurred during that process on the House floor or the Senate floor, and, and those two measures were adopted relatively quickly. I think that legislators initially thought that they would deal with the budget, because there is a known, a known quantity of, of lost revenue there, and, and use the days that they have to either tack on to the end or get out of town early. This is an election year for all 165. That's likely not going to be the case now that the court has, has issued an opinion that the legislature needs to return an equitable funding formula by June 30th of this year. That's the last day of the fiscal year for 2016. So we'll see what, we'll see what's going to happen over the, over the course of the next several weeks, as we sort of, I don't wanna say wind down, I mean, we're, we're sort of at the halfway point, but dates have been moved up, deadline dates have been moved up, in a significant way, almost a week on each turnaround period. And so those days can be used, if necessary, towards the end of the, the session. One interesting thing that I would report, and, and you can take this for whatever it's worth, but as part of the negotiated budget agreement, the legislature included $50,000 to retain counsel on the K-12 school finance issue. And that's not enough to really get you through any type of legal battle. I don't know what they plan to use the counsel for, but it, it could be sending a signal as to how they prepare to receive the, the message from the court, and I don't intend to opine on that. But I did list on page two of my report, I think what is the peanut of the court's decision on, on what needs to occur for, for the court to believe that...
Just so we're clear, this is K-12 funding.
This is K-12 funding, you are correct. So, so move forward then to the middle, late part of last week, and we had a little bit of a, well, I use the word kerfluffle in the Senate, and, and we've had a, the Senate President remove the Senate Chair of Health and Public Welfare, and, and since that time, we've had 17 Republican Senator, Senators sign on to a letter asking that the Senator be reinstated to the committee and that she be given back her chairmanship. We'll see how that continues to play out, but this is about a battle for the Senate leadership as, as the elections occur and we move into what would be the next session. I've already indicated that the legislative deadlines have been moved up, both for this current turnaround period. The legislature will finish their business next Tuesday, they were slated to finish that next Friday, and then they will take a break or take a few days off until March 2nd. Likewise, the March deadline dates have been moved up, and they will finish the, the first adjournment about a week earlier than, than was on the original legislative calendar. No conversations yet. You alluded to in your comments on the tax-led conversation, we know it's coming, but no dates have been scheduled. Four hearings on those bills, there are two bills. One we're already aware of, it was prefiled last, well, before the session even started. That's Senate Bill 316, which would ramp up the implementation dates and remove many of the exemptions that were put in place with the agreement that was made last year with the, the interested parties. The other item would be House Bill 2609, and that is a bill that was generated by some municipalities and local units of government. Still tweaks the, the legislation a little bit, tries to understand what the authors of Senate Bill 316 wanted to do, and so it does, I think, move up the implementation date slightly, but certainly not to July 1 of this year. We'll see what happens when those, when those hearings are scheduled. I anticipate that after, after turnaround, sometime during that first week or so after turnaround, the tax committee, the respective tax committees will schedule hearings on those bills. The, the thing that you've been talking about the most, I'll just give you a brief update on. House Bill 2531 was voted out of the House Education Committee on a vote of 11 to 6. I would, I would alert you to the fact that that is a non-exempt bill. That bill came from the Committee on Education. The legislature intends to use tomorrow as what they call a, a pro forma day, and so there will not be actual work occurring tomorrow. That leaves Monday and Tuesday of next week for the turnaround to occur, and so that bill will need to make its way through the process or be blessed if it is to remain alive. Moving on down, I won't, I won't hit every single bill that I've, that I've talked about here, but the, the JCCGED Accelerator Bill sits on general orders, that's one of the bills that we do anticipate will, will certainly move forward before turnaround occurs. Interestingly, there was a Pittsburgh State University bill that, that found its way into the mix that does exactly the same thing. I've had a few conversations with folks about the origin of that bill. I don't believe it's going anywhere, but just wanted to make you aware of, of the fact that it's out there, and, and I know that the folks at, at Pittsburgh State are not interested in pursuing that, that legislation, it was not brought by them. Three bills of interest in the House Vision 2020 Committee, and I'll just make you aware of them, they're not going anywhere, but, but certainly I want, I want you to be aware that, that they exist and that they're out there. The first one would allow community colleges with satellite facilities in other counties to have levying authority in those counties where those satellites occur. I think you can see some of the difficulty in that, and certainly that, that bill will have issues if it, if it does move forward, but I don't believe it will. The other, the other bill, well, there's two other bills that, that came from that committee. One is a bill that would move from 1 mil to 5 mils, the amount statewide that could be raised for the Educational Building Fund. Those are dollars that have been used for crumbling classrooms in the past, when they've had campaigns, more specifically related to crumbling classrooms. That, that bill also likely will not go anywhere. None of these bills are supported by the Board of Regents or by the individual institutions that would be impacted by them. The final bill that comes from that committee is a bill that would establish taxing authority for technical colleges, and just, just very quickly, you may recall that a few years back, the Board of Regents required that technical schools attain or change to a technical college status, and this all had to do with some of the articulation agreements. However, they still did not have taxing authority in their, in their jurisdictions or where their schools were cited, and so that bill would, would grant taxing authority to those institutions. Again, it's an election year, I don't think that's a realistic expectation that that bill moves forward. Finally, a bill that, that came out last week, is Senate Bill 420. This is a bill, I think, that, that has been discussed by the Community College Association. This is not on your list, by the way. I'm, this is free, I'm adding it. State universities cannot operate in a community college district without the permission of the community college that resides in that district, and so this simply would treat state institutions the same way that community colleges are treated in a state institution domiciled.
How does that look?
How's it look? It's not been scheduled for a hearing yet, and, and I failed to check to see if, if it was an exempt bill, but I'm sure that, I'm sure that it will be blessed if it hasn't been, and I'll double-check to see if it came from appropriations. That, that's the kicker. There's, there's few committees that can introduce bills that live beyond deadlines.
I believe the KBR is gonna oppose it. Have you heard any of that?
There was discussion in the Government Affairs, Government Relations Committee today with regard to that, and I need to follow up on the notes for the person who I sent to attend that, that meeting, but I do believe you're correct, that, that is, that is something that the board probably intends to oppose. And then finally, just, just maybe, maybe by way of good news, we had a very successful trip recently to Washington DC. Trustee Cook, Trustee Ingram, along with a student, Dr. Sobchak, Kate Allen and myself, attended the National Day on the Hill for AACC. We hosted a reception, which we have done in the past, did not do last year, and had Congressman Yoder and Congressman Moran in attendance, along with numerous staff. But I think most important were the value of the visits that we had in the individual offices, both in the Senators' offices, Senator Roberts, Senator Moran, as well as Congressman Yoder. We had a dynamic student that was with us this year, and, and as we do every year when we, when we go back to Washington DC, and, and they truly take center stage in those offices. Their, their opinions are held in high regard by those elected officials, and, and it's a true success story for the college that, that we can take back there, and, and this year was no, no different. And Dr. Sobchak may talk about that a little bit later in his report. Not to steal from his report, although he'll probably talk about this too, something that has been in the works for quite some time. This is, I think, the third attempt to schedule a roundtable on higher education issues, and Senator Roberts was in Topeka today to do just that, and I know Dr. Sobchak was over there with one of our business leaders, and so I'll let him touch on any of that, either in his report or whenever he chooses. But, Mr. Chairman, that would conclude my report, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if there are.
Questions for Dick?
I, I do, I do think it's worth mentioning, 'cause I think it was Rhonda again that mentioned Capers in the budget, and from a standpoint of something that should be troubling, I think, with respect to the budget that has been, is gonna be passed for '16 and '17, is that it defers $100 million worth of contributions to Capers, which was passed as part of the reforms in 2012, to make sure our public employee retirement system, which funds our community college trustees, or our community college trustees, I wish, community college faculty and K-12 faculty and state employees might get to the 60 or 65 percent fully funded range. Last year, we borrowed a billion dollars to put into it.
1.5 billion.
1.5 billion to put into it, on the anticipation that we would make more in interest in investing that. I haven't heard any reports on that. Seems like a bad time since July 1 to have been investing a billion five, and now we're gonna defer 100 million, but we're gonna pay it back next year with that 8 percent interest. with that 8% interest.
8% interest.
We promised we're going to pay it back.
So--
Thank you for catching that. I did not intend to gloss over that in my report, but that is a very important point to follow. And we've done the KDOT transfers. Now we've sort of exhausted those, and now we're looking at delaying payments to capers, and you're absolutely correct.
All right. Yes.
Could I just ask Mr. Carter's opinion? Like, if you had to match a point by point, who had the goofier tax plan, the British or the current Kansas Legislature? Would you want to weigh in on that?
British in the 1700s.
Yeah, the British, yes, thank you. I think the random goofiness in this tax policy for a group that says they don't like taxes, changes on Senate Bill 316, changes the property tax legislation reached last session. I mean, why do we need to go anywhere near real estate? I don't understand.
Well--
I'm not obligated to answer that.
I'm not obligated, but I--
Help yourself.
Yeah, I probably should have another shot of Smart Water. The governor has indicated the administration's intent to move towards a more consumption-based tax policy. And so when you do that, it does cause that, what we've traditionally called the three-legged stool in Kansas, to become out of balance. And so I'm probably not answering your question--
I don't know that I want you to answer it.
But I think it's a concern that a tremendous number of people in Topeka have.
If you can find a ship loaded with tea, please call Trustee Cross. He'll be there, right?
No objections.
Trustee Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you talk a little bit about the provision in the budget bill that allows the governor to do unilateral allotments?
Well, that's something that they began a couple of years ago, and have been giving the governor authority to do that so that when they're not in session, the State Finance Council really doesn't have much money to issue bonds against, and so that gives the governor allotment authority in specific areas, surgical strikes, if you will, versus across the board.
Right. If it's anticipated to go below zero.
Correct.
But isn't this different? Since there-- My understanding is this bill gave unilateral allotment authority if the budget goes below $100 million.
I would probably want to refer back to my notes before--
Okay. I was just curious if there, what the, and if you remember, the last time we were above $100 million in the budget.
It's been a while.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And allotments are the governor's ability to stop spending and actually recoup money at certain parts of the year if the budget is not going to balance at the end of that year.
That is correct.
Okay. You use lots of jargon that I didn't criticize you on today or try to ask you to explain, like general orders and things like that, but we really appreciate you being on the ground over there.
What does bless me, Mr. Chairman, may I ask? I forget.
And a blessed bill is by an exempt committee that can then keep the bill alive past deadlines.
A non-exempt, yeah, that's correct. A bill has to touch a committee that has exempt authority and can be sent back to another committee if necessary, whether that's on general orders, whether it's actually in committee. There are a few committees, Federal and State Affairs, Taxation, and the Budget Committees are the exempt committees.
Fed and State.
Thank you for that recap.
Fed and State.
And what they'll do at the end of the year is they'll bless bills. So they'll go through a list of 50 bills, and they'll say, Senate Bill 420 is referred to the Committee on Appropriations. And they'll send it back to that committee. So it touches a committee that has exempt authority, so it keeps the bill alive.
It's a method of keeping a bill alive if there is sufficient support from the right number of people or the right people.
Or the right people.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dick. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. The first committee report is the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee met on Thursday, February 4th, here at 8:00 a.m. I was present, along with Trustee Sharp and members of the administration. We heard a follow-up on a hazardous materials audit that the Kansas Department of Health and Environment had conducted a couple of years ago, and we learned that we are, have in fact fixed any problems they found. And we've got a quarterly project update on items, including the payroll audit, the Oracle data security review, and ongoing projects, including data loss prevention, cash counts, and purchasing card monitoring. We looked at the Audit and Recommendation Follow-Up Matrix that the auditor, Janelle, and her team present, showing us where they are on various audits, which are ranked depending on the severity of the risk, I guess, to the, if something really went bad. And a quarterly report on the Ethics Report line and on the Behavioral Intervention and COPS program, which is always interesting to see how we're doing on identifying earlier in the process students or others on campus that might need intervention. And then Janelle Vogler presented an update on two ongoing legal and audit matters that her department has been reviewing. That's my report. Trustee Sharp, anything to add? If not, the next item is Collegial Steering. I reported on that earlier. The entire Collegial Steering Meeting two weeks ago was spent discussing House Bill 2531 and potential responses by the college, all parts of the college, in the event that passes, and I think we've discussed that already. So unless there are other questions, we went through that in some detail with faculty and administration present. Committee reports next. Human Resources, Dr. Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Ingram is going to report.
Be happy to. Human Resources Committee met on Monday, February 1st. The single item on the agenda was a presentation from Holmes Murphy. Matt Wheeler, who is a benefit consultant from Holmes Murphy, presented an overview of the current status of the renewal information for the college's medical coverage. An RFP was issued, and we are waiting on answers to follow-up questions before making a decision on the provider in FY '17. The highlights include the medical insurance marketplace is going through significant changes, which always embacts quotes. The RFP responses were based on the college's utilization data for the past 12 months and industry trend. The college's long-term trend runs at approximately 7% inflation rate, which is better than the average 9% industry inflation trend. The Cadillac tax on medical plans has been postponed to 2020, and responding companies have been asked to supply additional information if there were questions regarding any of the proposals. A final analysis and decision will be made after we receive that follow-up information. Ensuing discussion included the need to get input from an Employee Benefit Committee regarding the plan design, considerations for evaluating fully insured and self-insured plans, continued wellness initiatives to counter the rising costs due to utilization factors. And we also discussed the timeline for Holmes Murphy to finalize the 2016-2017 rate increase with a plan to take the recommendation to the March Board meeting. The next scheduled Human Resources Committee will be on March 7, and that concludes our report.
Questions? If not, we're ready for Learning Quality. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Learning Quality actually did meet this month, on February 1st, 2016, at 8:00 a.m. Trustee Ingram and I were there, Anderson, Dennis Arjo, and a host of others. Kevin Cannell gave a sabbatical presentation. Mr. Cannell is a professor of chemistry. He shared a PowerPoint presentation on his fall 2014 sabbatical. He created a set of online instructional videos, photos, quizzes for purposes of review and preparation for the Principles of Chemistry, Chem-122 Lab exams, and incorporated them into D2L. He also created a set of online instructional videos, photos, and exercises for the purposes of a dry lab alternative for 14 out of 24 current laboratory experiments, some of which have up to 75 slides. And this allows students who regularly misschedule laboratory activities to have an opportunity to catch up and learn information that they will need for upcoming exams by using their lab manuals, noting observations, and arriving at proper conclusions. The instructional tools are now available for all adjunct and full-time faculty to use. Mr. Dennis Arjo went through a review of curriculum for the academic year of 2016 and '17. There are numerous course removals due to health and physical education, general education requirement changes. There was one new communications course and nine new respiratory care courses, four course edits in respiratory care and mathematics, 10 respiratory care course deactivations, one respiratory care credit program edit, excuse me. Dennis Arjo shared that the large agenda for ed affairs mainly addressed degree changes caused by the change, excuse me, in the HPR degree requirement in the respiratory care program, had several changes due to the program's restructuring. J.D. Craig spoke about an articulation agreement with Mid-America Nazarene University. We know somebody that worked there, I think. J.D. Gragg and Rick Moore have reached a new articulation agreement with Mid-America to take JCC students as juniors if they have an AA or an AS degree. Guaranteed scholarships will be offered to honors and transfer students. Our college students will also be allowed to attend Mid-America events for free by using their JCC CID card. For some specific programs, students will receive 20% off their tuition rates under this agreement, and I think that's a good deal. I thank everyone who worked on that. For the 2015 winter session, Vince Miller and Ed Lovett provided an update about what happened. I think, on balance, it was a successful program. Ed Lovett, the Director of Distance Learning, provided an update on the 2015 winter session that ran from December 14 to January 9, 2016. There was a plethora of student and faculty feedback, mostly positive. My comments, as Mr. Anderson knows, is that I really do think we should limit students to one course per session. I think it's a wonderful idea. I just think we should greatly caution students, and I have closed class opener in my mind from my KU days in terms of really setting the bar high for students to get into two. And I know we had a few that took three--
Yeah, one, well, two that took three. They were down to one after about five days.
So I think, on balance, it was a good deal. It just, I think we saw some struggles from people who loaded up with multiple courses, and frankly, some comments from faculty, although, on balance, positive, it is very intense and a great deal of time committed to them. Mr. Anderson also provided us an HLC accreditation update on the auditing of faculty credentials required for HLC accreditation. The credential review of College Now instructors is ongoing and should be completed soon. All faculty who do not meet credential standards will need to develop a plan that will bring them into compliance. The college will apply for an extension from HLC to allow high school faculty up to five years to complete their plans, and the college is developing a correspondence to share with high schools, explaining that the college plans to bring all College Now faculty into compliance. I believe, finally, Mr. Anderson provided a student attendance policy update to the Board Packet, and we do have one item to report and recommend for Board approval. The Learning Quality Committee has reviewed the recommended updates to the student attendance policy, which you can find on your Board packets, I believe, at pages six and seven. The proposed updates serve to clarify the expectations for students, for student attendance applicable to in-person and online credit courses. The updates also reference the procedures for obtaining authorization for absences. So, Mr. Chairman, this is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the student attendance policy, as shown on pages six and seven, and I so move.
I'll second.
Been moved and by Trustee Cross and seconded by Trustee Ingram to adopt the student attendance policy as shown in the Board Packet. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Passes unanimously.
I just wanted to add one additional comment. You elaborated, no, 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 you elaborated very well on the winter session, but I was kind of reminded when we met that that was something that just began as a conversation back in September, and it just basically moved forward. So I really wanted to thank staff who were involved with that and did a really nice job with that. He has already alluded to the fact that not everything was positive, perfect, but it sounds like you've got plans in place to make sure that things are working, and overall it was much, much of a success. But I just wanted to thank everyone for their hard work.
We have adopted that as an equip project going forward, so we'll be updating and improving those processes.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
And I echo it, and I can't belabor it enough. I was an Airduel frat boy who rallied with some short-term courses once upon a time. So I know that it's tempting to load up those courses, but I just, I beseech the administration and the academic community, please just watch those students. Don't let them hurt themselves. But I do think it's wonderful, the attention I think one gets in those short sessions, and then frankly, I think the pride that you develop, realizing you're one of the few people here or there doing something is, it was, for me, a realization toward, you know, coming here and being a patriot where you want to deal with. At any rate, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right. We'll move to the Management Committee report. Trustee Lindstrom.
On behalf of Trustee Cook, the Management Committee met at ADM on Wednesday, February 3rd here in the Board Room. The information related to the management meeting can be found on pages nine through 11 in the Board Packet, and there are no recommendations to present this evening. We did receive, however, several reports. The first report was from Natalie Allman Byers, Director of Institutional Planning and Research. She reported on the Johnson County Community College Pulse and Scorecard. These two reports are related to the college's key performance indicators, or KPIs, and strategic goals. The Pulse provides forward-looking, leading metrics, helping identify where we are trending relative to the KPIs and strategic goals. The Scorecard provides a five-year trend data related to the college key metrics. Second report was from Phil Wegman, Program Director of Continuing Education. He presented information about an agreement with McCarthy, O'Leith, and Nissan for the lease of a Nissan Leaf for the driver's education program. The agreement is listed in the Consent Agenda on page 29 of the Board Packet. Our third report was from Rachel Lerts, Associate Vice President, Financial Services, and Chief Financial Officer. She provided a quarterly update on the college's investments in the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool and a monthly budget update. She also informed us that all department budgets were to be entered into the college financial system by 5:00 p.m. today, February 18. Our next report was from Mitch Borgers, Associate Vice President, Business Services, and he presented a sole source report. And finally, Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facility Planning, provided a monthly update on the capital infrastructure projects, and his report is on page 11 of the Packet. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
That's a light meeting for management.
That's a light meeting.
You guys normally have a lot of action items. Any questions for Trustee Lindstrom? All right, we're ready to move on to the President's Recommendations for Action. The first item that is back to Dave on the Treasurer's Report.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Packet, pages 12 through 22, contain the Treasurer's Report for the month ending December 31, 2015. Some items of note include, page one of the Treasurer's Report is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. As of December 31, 50% of the college year had expired, fiscal year has expired. State aid payments of $10.7 million and ad valorem property tax distribution of $46.8 million were received during January and will be reflected in next month's report. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of December 31 in all funds was $50.3 million, which is approximately $10.5 million higher than the same time this time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating fund are within approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ending December 31, 2015, subject to audit, and I would make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the Treasurer's Report for the month ending December 31, 2015. Is there any, are there any questions, or is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, that concludes my Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, David. Monthly report to the Board, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Musil. I really can't give the regular President's Report without saying a few words about HB 2531. Tonight's comments to the trustees is really what makes working at a college, on a college campus, so exhilarating. The opportunity to express one's opinion in a public forum to the publicly elected Board on critical issues of the day, especially this one, it's a wonderful gift. It's hard to imagine any other institution, other than academia, where this can happen. And we're all so fortunate that this can happen here at Johnson County Community College. I want to commend the faculty that presented at the House Education Committee meeting last week. My understanding is that they represented their positions in this college in fine fashion, and that was reported to me by other community college presidents. The students of this college are fortunate to have them as-- The students of this college are fortunate to have them as instructors, and we were all fortunate to have such inspired colleagues. I would also like to thank the President of the Faculty Association, Ron Palczek, and the President of the Faculty Senate, Nathan Jones, for their leadership. Ron has worked tirelessly, behind the scenes, to help us move the college to the best possible solution should the proposed legislation be turned into law. Nathan has been very helpful in keeping the lines of communication open between the administration and the faculty leadership, and I think this bodes well for the future. Should HB 2531 go into law with this kind of leadership from our trustees, administration, and faculty, I believe our prospects for a future in which these kinds of dialogues, like what we've experienced tonight, open expressions of beliefs and positions will continue unrestricted and without fear at Johnson County Community College, so I want to thank you. We had originally planned on having a presentation, and I think, Natalie, the Pulse presentation would probably go on a little longer than we'd want at 6:50 in the evening, so we're going to skip this, and we're going to go into a couple of other things that have happened on this campus, and Terry's going to help me get through the audiovisual portion here, that I'd like to share with you that reflect the activities, or the, I guess you can say the incredible work of many of our staff as well as our faculty. Several weeks ago, our Hospitality Management Program hosted the Greater Kansas, and the Greater Kansas City Restaurant Association underwrote a high school culinary competition. This was a first for Johnson County Community College. We had 13 schools bring 14 teams to our campus to compete. Oak Park, Yodora, Grandview, Herndon Center, Olathe North, KCK Community College, Staley, Abilene, Wamigo, Liberty North, Blue Valley Academy, Center, Blue Springs South, all came to Johnson County Community College. I wonder if 10 years ago that this many high schools had these culinary programs. This competition certainly helps put our college at the center of culinary instruction, in the center of the culinary instruction universe in the Kansas City metro region, and hats off to Ona Ashley and Jerry Marcellus for making this happen. So, Terry, we have a little clip here. Jerry's going to give us a bit more information.
Did you bring any food?
No.
No.
Today is the first annual Johnson County Community College HCA High School Team Culinary Competition. Today, we have 14 high schools from the state of Kansas and Missouri. We've always been frustrated by the fact that there really is not an outlet for the high school team to compete. Our thought process was to open this up to any high school, and that was really the only prerequisite to entering the competition. The student teams are not competing against each other, per se. They're competing against a standard, so when they walk into the kitchen, they have all their points. As they make errors, they lose points. They get point deduction, and if they have a 90 to 100, they will win a gold medal; an 80 to an 89 points is a silver medal; 70 to 79 points, a bronze medal. We are, however, giving a best in show award to the team that has the highest points scored.
It was so exciting to see those students compete in our culinary center. When they walked into our place, it's way, way ahead of what they have in their local high schools, so we're very fortunate, and again, Jerry Marcellus and Ona Ashley did a great job with that. This past week, we've also hosted, we hosted Kansas City Biz Fest, and Melissa Jimenez and Melinda Bryan Smith did a heck of a job bringing that to our campus. First time ever. KC Biz Fest provided four days of intense business training to 100 students from 32 different high schools in the Kansas City metropolitan area. The focus is on business leadership and collaboration skills. It is sponsored by the Greater Kansas City Hispanic Collaborative and the Greater Kansas City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and again, this was the first time it's ever been held on our campus. The program features a wide variety of business professionals and subject matter experts to help these students prepare for a career in business. Students, while primarily Hispanic, also hailed from Africa, Asia, and Europe. I spoke at their graduation, and enthusiasm, excitement from not only the students but their families was off the charts, so we now have a clip that talked about this on Univision. I think that was the first time we've ever ran a Spanish-language clip at trustee meeting. Another activity we had was something called Hort Day. This is Laika Schreeder did this one, and this was the sixth annual Hort Day. This year's Horticultural Sciences Day theme was Integrated Landscapes for the 21st Century Horticulture. The purpose of the event is to sing the praises of horticulture sciences, but also to incorporate local businesses in the field. This provides, this event provides an excellent opportunity for our students, and there were about 40 of them in attendance, to see the real-world application of what they learn in the classroom and in the lab. These four, this year, four business leaders were honored. Lindsay Clear, CEO of Loma Vista; Dalton Hermes, CEO of Hermes Landscaping; Larry Ryan, President of Ryan Lawn &amp; Tree; and Matt Stuke, VP of Suburban Lawn &amp; Garden. This was an incredible opportunity for our students, as well as getting business leaders in this field on campus. Laika did, has done an incredible job with this, and obviously, it's the sixth year, and it keeps getting stronger and stronger every year. Lastly, I'd like to show you a picture from Washington, DC. Mr. Carter talked about this earlier. We were fortunate to attend the National Legislative Summit. Trustees Cook and Ingram joined Kate Allen, Dick Carter, and myself, went to Washington, and we brought with us Kevin Robertson, one of our students. The purpose was to learn about the issues at the federal level that could potentially impact community colleges, but most important, most importantly, it was an opportunity for Kevin Robertson to do some lobbying. You may remember that Kevin was a student from This Springs in service, that he takes a bus two and a half hours from north of the river to come to our campus. Kevin spoke eloquently and with great depth to our representatives, Congressman Kevin Yoder, Senators Jerry Moran, and Pat Roberts, about the importance of Pell Grants, the need to continue them and to strengthen the program. He was so effective that Senator Moran remarked afterwards that he was an incredible representative for our college. This is an incredible opportunity for Kevin, and I think it will go a long way to giving him the confidence that he needs to succeed at Johnson County Community College. This was just one way, one more way, that we all work for student success here at Johnson County, so thank you.
Questions for the President? I would just, I had the opportunity to welcome the Biz Fest students. They're way too young to be in high school, and they get younger every year, but I tell you what, talking to the sponsors ahead of time before their opening session, most of these kids have never been on a college campus before of any kind. Most of these 100 kids would be the first-time attendees in college in their family's history, and to get them out of their schools from all over the metro area and get them here on campus, I don't know whose idea it was to host them, was brilliant, because they're a big part of the future, this college, and I think what they saw, they will come back, and they were eager, and they were working hard, and they spent four hard days here on their projects, and then I look at the things where we're bringing Wamigo and Abilene High School kids in here to show them, that's great community outreach that we need to continue to do. So, thank everybody. I know that's a lot of work for a lot of people, and nobody gets enough credit for it. If we're ready to move on, we'll go to the report of the Faculty Association, Mr. Palczek. He disappeared.
I'm down, I'm down.
While you're coming up, Nathan ought to be pretty proud. So far in the meeting tonight, as an English professor, we've used besiege, plethora, and kerfluffle, which I can't even say, so that's pretty good stuff here tonight.
I have come bearing of gifts. We've made a copy for each board member, and I will trust that Greg Musil, Chairman Musil, will make sure that Jerry Cook gets his copy.
Certainly.
If you'd like to pass those around, that would be great. Good evening. I should have introduced myself. I'm Ron Palczek, and thank you, Chairman Musil, the Board of Trustee, and Dr. Sobcek. I also want to say there's a special guest in the audience. It is my wife, if she would stand up, so I'm a little bit more nervous than normal, because she's present.
I'm sorry, I said we can't applaud. We could have embarrassed Kim.
And her name is Kimberly Palczek. Thank you, Kim, for coming. The faculty chair's report that I just passed around, it was put in on time. It was, the deadline was November. We had it finished at that point by the Faculty Senate, and it had to be extended a little bit longer, because we wanted to give the Faculty Senate time to read it, because it is 100 pages long. And I just wanted to make sure the gift, and I have Dr. Vin Clark here in the audience in case there's any questions that you may have at your perusing, be sure to contact him directly. And so, on behalf of the Faculty Association, we endorse this report also. We're in about the third, third of the way through the semester, and everyone's working hard with their students, but I would remiss if I don't talk about House Bill 2531. I should have signed up, but I did not. As a representative of the faculty, these are the concerns that I need to present, that our faculty members have been presenting to me, and I'm their elected representative, as well as other members in the audience who are elected Faculty Association members. The faculty is anticipating, is working closely with you, and we really appreciate Chairman Musil's response to all of us, but we are really looking forward to it. We're continuing to provide the workplace that exists today and into the future, and this relationship between the board and the faculty has been time-tested and is a win-win for our students, for our faculty, the staff, and the board at the college. Greg, you didn't catch that one, at the college.
Thank you.
Okay. What the faculty believe in, and I need to present this, because this is something that a lot of faculty members have been talking to me, and I know we've been working behind the scene, and I'm looking forward to continue this work, but what the faculty believe, they believe that due process is not a job for life. The faculty believe that due process is a safeguard system that should a faculty member have an unproductive issue allowing for intervention and perhaps dismissal. The faculty believes that due process allows faculty to teach at their best and to encourage robust, vibrant discussions promoting critical thinking and without fear of retaliation. The faculty believe that due process allows the same rigor as any four-year university. What's good for the college? The curriculum. Due process protects against micromanagement issues as personnel constantly change in administration and boards. Due process will help keep the best faculty at JCCC and in Kansas. Due process protects the college from lengthy, expensive lawsuits in a rare event that a termination is necessary. Due process is a belief that builds trust between the faculty and administration to enhance fairness, create a working environment in the best interest of the students. So, these are some of the things I just want to represent that faculty have talked to me about, and I try to put them in as short a phase as I can. I look forward to continue to work with you, with the administration, as an agent for the board, to place this into the master agreement as early as possible time we can. I really do. And if there's any questions for me, I'm open for it, and I thank you for letting me present tonight.
Yes, Dr. Drummond.
The word, Ron, that you used earlier is exactly where I'm at, and that is a win-win. I just believe there's a win-win in all this. None of us asked for this. It's coming down the pike. It's on our plate. We'll respond to it, and I think we can respond to it and create a circumstance that's a whole lot better than what we currently have.
Right.
I just think there's things that we can do, and I believe this board will do, to be able to help the faculty understand how committed we are to them, how much we believe in them, and we have to do something concrete to demonstrate that, and my hope and belief is that we, as board members, as trustees, will in fact do that. Having been involved in education for, elected position in education for 25 years, I have a lot of war stories about local control not being there, and none of us good, and I feel and hear what you're saying as faculty. I probably would be doing the same thing if I were in your place, talking about this, as you guys have respectfully done, but I also know, as a trustee and a board member, that we do a better job. We do a much better job than elected people and bureaucratic people in Topeka, and it's our role now, in my opinion, to demonstrate to you that we can do the things that you're talking about together and create a circumstance that, that helps to develop even more of a trust between us, because the winners in all that are our students. We have to do that, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. I really appreciate that comment. Any others?
Ron, I'll thank you for the report, which I think I was at the Faculty Senate meeting a year ago, or when it went last spring, when it was announced, and you're going to meet your goal by November, and you met it. I think it's been submitted to the administration so that Andy and his team and the rest of the administration can look it over and figure out, I guess, what to do with it and make recommendations back to us, so thank you for sharing that with us. Ron, I like the word win-win, the phrase win-win. I also like the phrase time-tested. The relationship between faculty and this board is time-tested. That doesn't mean it's always been friendly. That doesn't mean it's always been perfect. That doesn't mean faculty's always said, "Yay, look what the board did." But over the life of this college, I think boards before I was ever on it have done a pretty good job of finding that balance that we have to do in the big picture of all the legislative issues, taxpayer issues, voter issues, and faculty demands to have the level of academic freedom they can use to innovate, and I think we'll find that, too. I think we're going to find that, and I, you know, we've got to, we've got to work together to prove it.
And I'm very optimistic, working with Dr. Sobcek and Judy Corp and the rest of the team with the Faculty Association, that we can work something out. I have all the confidence in the world in all of you, and I'm looking forward to this, and thank you.
Well, I would mention that you and Nathan and Vin, when you were President of Faculty Senate, and Deb, who's not here, being the head of an organization like that is not easy, and, you know, sometimes cooperating isn't easy. It puts you in a tough position, because you're not doing enough on one side or the other, and so I think we understand that your job isn't easy, and so to the extent we can work together, and as we have done thus far and will continue to do, I think that this, we can turn this into chicken salad. That's all.
And I like chicken salad. Thank you.
Research and Education Triangle, trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, there's no, there's been no general meeting since our last trustee meeting, so therefore, there is no report.
Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, trustee Ingram.
Yes, I will report from trustee Dr. Jerry Cook. I was not actually in attendance at this meeting, but he did provide some notes regarding the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, which met this past Thursday, February 18th in Topeka. Part of the meeting included the 21st Annual Kansas All-State Academic Team Recognitions. Honored from Johnson County Community College were Emily Reno, who was here earlier this evening, whose transfer institution will be the University of Kansas, and Angela Sasse, whose transfer institution will be Park College. The National Phi Theta Kappa CEO, Dr. Tinter Ladner, was the luncheon guest speaker. The afternoon was joint meeting of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees and the Council of Presidents. Mike O'Neill, CEO of the Kansas Chamber, addressed the group, and the next meeting will be in June. That's all I have to report.
Questions? Your report's shorter than Dr. Cook's.
Thank you.
We'll note that for the record. Okay, we're ready for the consent agenda. I apologize for just taking an M and M. The consent agenda is a group of non-controversial items that have been vetted by various committees and are normally considered in one vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the consent Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda and considered, debated, and voted upon separately. Are there any items any board member would like to remove from this month's consent agenda and have considered separately? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Sharp and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Yes.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, even though trustee Lindstrom said yes and not aye. I'm paying attention.
My yes is yes.
Wanted to prove I'm paying attention. All right, well, that moves us to a part of the agenda where I'm going to ask Dr. Drummond if he would like to make some comments.
Yes, thank you, Chair Musil. Wanted to announce to the audience something I informed the board with this week, and I will be retiring from the board as of the end of June, and I will make further comments about that at the June board meeting, but just wanted the public to know that I've made this decision for many different reasons, and again, we'll make further remarks in the June board meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know we'll, we'll properly feed you at the June meeting, but Dr. Drummond has been an elected position overseeing educational policy, both at the Olahtha School Board and the community college for 25 years. That is a level of sacrifice and commitment that is rarely seen, even in this county, where we have lots of good people participating in government entities. So, Bob, we're going to miss you, and we will, we will appropriately talk about your contributions to this college and the Olahtha School District and the education community of this county in June, but obviously, comments here, trustee Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just wanted to commend trustee Drummond on really an amazing career. I had the distinction, I suppose, of beating him in the 2013 election, and in the interim, during my transition, trustee Drummond actually invited me to lunch and began a relationship with me and at least giving me his thoughts on the board, his honest, sincere, earnest positions on the board, things to look out for, briefing me in my job to come, almost in a surreal manner, not really, as a person who's participated in a lot of electoral contests, it was something of a unique experience in governing and politics, and I wanted to commend him. He has, I believe in your words, Mr. Chair, today, or in an email earlier this week, said that he's the voice of reason in some difficult discussions and bringing clarity when seemingly there was none. So I wanted to commend him on his career, thank him for his, his mannerism, politeness, professionalism, and his treatment to me, and congratulate him and his family on some well-deserved time off.
We will formally act on his resignation at the March meeting, so I guess we have the right to reject it.
I was going to say.
And by that time, we will also put in place a, a process that is set forth by statute and policy to seek a replacement that would be appointed by this board, as we've done on prior occasions. I, not a replacement, a successor, because he will not be replaced. Trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, you know, many of us who have the good fortune to come to Johnson County from other places, like myself, choose to stay here, if, even if they have opportunities to go elsewhere, choose to stay here. My wife and I choose to stay here because of the kind of leadership that Dr. Drummond has provided. This community is what it is because of Dr. Drummond and others like him. So for that, I thank you.
We're going to have to say something humbling for you, Bob, because it's...
I hope so.
I don't know if we can come up with something that...
Well, I would appreciate that.
We will miss you, and we will, we will address that at a later meeting appropriately. But at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege in the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. Session will last no more than 15 minutes. No action will be taken. We will reconvene in this room. Actually, this, at this point, we'll probably ask folks to leave, like we normally do. At the end of the meeting, nobody seems to care. We'd like to invite Dr. Sobchak, Dr. Korb, Andy Anderson, Dr. Larson, and Tanya Wilson to participate in that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Lindstrom. Why don't we start at 7:20? They'll take about a five-minute break. We'll start at 7:20. We will reconvene in this room at 7:35. We are back from executive session. We had a minute early at 7:34 PM. No action was taken. We, we did ask the administration, as was alluded to earlier, to immediately begin discussions with the Faculty Association. Mr. Palczek is back here, and faculty is appropriate on fixes that would need to be put in place, and would be appropriate if this legislation passes, so that the effort will be undertaken immediately. I think we're ready for a motion for adjournment? Is there some?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried. We are adjourned.